Alrighty, I'm gonna call to order our, our open session for today, Monday, October 13th. Great to see everyone here. We'll start with calling to order the meeting and roll call. Let the record show, all five trustees, as well our student trustees are present. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. You can all join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, and if I can get approval of tonight's meeting agenda, if we're not changing anything?
I move to approve the agenda.
I second.
Moved by Catherine, seconded by Alex. The agenda as is. We moved closed session to after our open session, so nothing to report right now at 6.3. 6.4, we are notifying everyone that open session will be audiotaped and streamed. Okay, and then we'll move on to communications, board member reports. Does anyone have a report for today? Vadim, Alex, and Theda. Does anyone want to go first? Oh, and Catherine. Why don't we start? I like to start with Vadim, and then we'll work our way down.
Alright, so my report is about attending three classes today. I was off work, so it was a great opportunity, and it was a really amazing experience that I wanted to share and encourage the rest of the board members to give it a try. So I attended ethnic studies, AP Biology and Trigonometry, and thank you Dr. Raniya for hosting me and the rest of the Los Altos teaching community. A few things that were interesting, so ethnic studies was also a co-taught class, so I got that experience. I got to see what it's like for two teachers to, to teach, which is not easy, but they had an amazing coordination. It also a class that used constructing meaning to help students frame their conversations. AP Bio used constructing meaning, it was a single teacher in the room. And Trigonometry just had a very motivated teacher, no constructing meaning, but that teacher was incredible and engaging students. I was very impressed with seeing how students would go to the board and actually work on a problem together. I didn't expect that, to be honest. I thought that we don't do this in American schools, and it brought back my memories of being called to the board and in having to solve a problem on the board. The level of comfort was visible in that classroom with, with all the students, and that was really nice to see. So I again, thank you so much for the opportunity and like, you know, being there.
I just want to say homecoming at Mountain View was fun, both the parade and all the performances after the parade, and then the homecoming football game. So it was a nice, long, fun day. And it was so fun, so much fun to watch the students do their thing and be so enthusiastic about their school.
Yeah, yeah, so I also attended the Mountain View High School Homecoming Parade and Football Game with Catherine, and it was, it was just amazing experience, such a joyful spirited celebration of students, staff, community, this wonderful reminder of the connection and the pride, and the pride that makes this district and this community so special. So I thoroughly enjoyed every second, and I could see that the students were just beaming this pride and joy as well. So it was an amazing experience, so kudos to Dr. Glazer and everyone in Mountain View High School who, who made this homecoming experience so wonderful. And the other point I wanted to share, a quick note of another point of pride for, for the district, in particular for Mountain View High School tech interns. The Washington Post recently featured the tech interns NLASD in a story about how we're approaching AI in education, and it highlighted the students' leadership in helping graphic AI policy alongside teachers and parents. And I thought it was quite incredible, and national recognition for our district, for our superintendent, Mr. Volta, for Dr. Glazer, for the tech interns program, and it highlights our students who are helping shape this conversation on the national stage, right here in our community. So yeah, kudos to that.
Go ahead.
I didn't write my notes out ahead of time. Some people do. Anyway, I wanted to also give praise to Los Altos High School and the Principal's Advisory Council. Dr. Raniya brought her group to Challenge Team, which is a collaborative group of adults at different organizations collaborating for youth, and the students were very honest, answered all our questions about how it is in high school and the kind of input they've been giving to the school on, from the students' perspective. Just great, just great.
First of all, I wanted to say I totally agree with you Vadim, that attending class is one of the great joys, get to be in high school again for a little bit and see our amazing students. I attended Los Altos High School's first PTSA meeting. PTSA donated $10,000 each towards Steam Week and Campus Improvements. Their membership is down this year. If you're a Los Altos family who can donate, it will directly benefit your child. I also heard about Welcome Week, which we heard about a while ago, but I heard that it included 100 student volunteers. I continue to be impressed by how much care students show for each other's mental health. I also agree with Catherine and Alex about Homecoming, which was a month earlier. The senior presenting at PTSA said she appreciated not making a float during early college admission applications. And I just want to say a personal note, thanks Eric for driving me and Jeeves in your convertible for the Homecoming Parade. I love seeing all the school spirit and all the cheers and waves for you. And I'll be participating in MVLA's foundation Phone-A-Thon tomorrow. Please contribute, and as the foundation says, avoid the call, although hopefully you won't mind caring for me, but you can look at their website to see exactly how their funds make a difference for every student. I also attended the foundation meeting where they reviewed teacher innovation grant applications. A wonderful opportunity to see the passion and dedication of our teachers. And I attended an information event for Pivotal, which provides one-on-one coaching for foster youth with an amazing college graduation success rate. Pivotal is active in MVLA but opt-in, so if you happen to know a foster youth in eighth grade or above, please encourage them to join this amazing organization.
Awesome. Thank you all for those updates, and just want to thank the whole board again for continuing the important work in my absence. Today's my first board meeting back after being on leave, and I'm happy to be back and have a three-month-old now who's healthy and happy and growing. So thank you all for continuing the great work. So with that, we'll go, move on to 7.2, our student board member reports. Lucy, do you want to go first, and then Claire?
Good evening, board members, staff and community. I'm excited to share some recent highlights from our campus for our very eventful past two weeks. We just wrapped up a memorable Homecoming Week with the theme Timeless Classics. Throughout the week, students enjoyed lunchtime events like Mystery Bucket and a spirited game of Family Feud, which brought students together in a fun, high-energy way. The Homecoming Parade was another major event featuring creative floats, club and sports team appearances, and of course, our Homecoming Top 20 Court. I'm especially proud to share that the junior class won the float building competition, which was a big achievement for us. At the Homecoming Football Game, our Homecoming Royals were announced during halftime, and the crowd brought amazing school spirit throughout the night with our blackout theme. The week concluded with our Homecoming Dance, where we welcomed over 1,000 students, a huge turnout that made for a lively and memorable evening. Outside of Spirit Week, this past Wednesday was a key academic day as the students took the PSAT and SAT. Everything ran smoothly, and students appreciated the chance to focus in a quiet and organized environment. In the arts, we're also gearing up for a spring musical, Singing in the Rain. This past Monday and Tuesday, the Theater Department held dance audition workshops, and there was a great student participation. Excitement is building for auditions and what sure to be a fantastic production. We just completed the first quarter, and students were excited for their well-earned quarter break before jumping into the rest of the semester. Thank you for your ongoing support of Los Altos High School. We're proud of all the learning, spirit, and creativity happening on our campus.
Thank you, Lucy. Any questions for the board though? Okay. Claire, I think that's next.
Hello, MVLA Board. First, I'd like to thank MVLA Board members Ms. Fonnegut and Ms. Levich, as well as MVHS Principal Dr. Glazer for attending the 2025 Homecoming Parade. It meant a lot to the MVHS community and ASB class to have our school leaders in attendance. Speaking of Homecoming Week, it was a great success culminating in a parade with strong community participation, a varsity football victory, and the crowning of Karen Chen and Sadie Bankhead as this year's Homecoming royalty at the halftime show. At the halftime show, it was also announced that the sophomores got first in the float building competition, with juniors getting second and seniors and freshmen tying for third. On the leadership side, ambassadors continued their classroom lessons for freshmen, delivering inspiring speeches and fostering connection among our newest Spartans. Looking ahead, the next two weeks are filled with exciting events and opportunities. Next week includes a congressional meeting on Friday and the Fall Blood Drive, led by the Health Careers II Class in partnership with the Stanford Blood Center. The drive is open to students 16 and older. Next week will host our annual Steam Week, featuring a variety of engaging activities from affair and quad demonstrations to guest speakers events attended by many STEM classes. The week will conclude with a Spartans' Pause in the Quad hosted by ambassadors to promote mental health awareness and community connection through fun, interactive events. Overall, it has been a wonderful close to the first quarter, full of community spirit, student leadership, and academic engagement. We're looking forward to all that quarter two will bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Any questions? Claire? Alrighty, thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Welcome back, Esme. You may not know this, but superintendents like odd-numbered boards. The even number makes them nervous. Like Lucy said, we're halfway through the first semester. Quarter of the way down the school year, seems hard to believe that we're already that far into the school year. I was going to talk about the Principal's Advisory Team, but to add on, and I'm sure Dr. Raniya will say some more, it was 45 minutes that the students got grilled by the community answering questions. It was pretty impressive. As you know, we're looking, one of our goals this year is to look to find ways to carve out time for collaboration with our teachers. So our survey went out to our staff members. We are close to sending out that same survey to parents and students as well. Terry's doing a great job working with Challenge Success in developing these surveys, and hopefully we get some good information. And as a former coach, I didn't pay attention to rankings, but they are nice if you're at the top end of them. And since the last time we met, Nish, which is a real estate company, and I know all of the things, but if you're going to get ranked, it's nice when one of your high schools is in the top 20. Los Altos, I think they're 18, Mountain View 26th, and when they rank districts, MVLA was number two, number one in Northern California. So that was kind of nice to see. And again, who knows how they do that, but if you're going to get ranked, it's nice to be near the top. With that, I'll turn it over to the principals, and we're going to start with Alta Vista and Ms. Wolf.
Hello, good evening and welcome back. So two things I wanted to tell you about specific to Alta Vista. We recently took part in Mountain View Community's Compassion Week with two different events and involving student volunteers, and one of the events was a two-day component of creating pillowcases for local shelters and decorating them with personalized, really adorable messages, which was a great activity for our students. And another was working with Mentor Tutor Connection volunteers to plant additional items in Alta Vista's Serenity Garden, and so outside volunteers along with our own students came onto campus for that Compassion Week event. Another thing that is unfolding throughout this semester so far is our art class with Frandy Filbert and working with an innovation grant, thanks to our MVLA Foundation from last spring, has been combining art with writing in an engaging way through nature journaling, working with a mentor teacher so that she can replicate this in future years, but also visiting local museums and different things even such as walks and hikes, so that combining nature art and writing together. So that's been really engaging for students. Thank you.
From Los Altos, Dr. Raniya.
Good evening. So two weeks ago, Los Altos had the annual Steam Week, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Mathematics, and our school was honored to have CEOs, executive directors, authors, researchers, astronomers, as well as lunchtime activities to inform and engage our students. The week culminated in a technology exposition in our gym that featured 11 steam-related local companies who showed off their work products and also provided some internship opportunities for students, and two of our student clubs demonstrated their, their projects as well. This week, our Student Community Leaders, or SCL, is leading a College and Career Awareness Week with daily activities at lunch that kicked off today, where we had community college representatives on campus. Tomorrow, we have firefighters and police visiting to share their careers. Wednesday, we have branches of the military visiting. Thursday is College and Career Spirit Dress-Up Day, where you can wear college wear or an outfit of the career of your aspiration. And Friday, students can attend workshops about athletic recruitment, job interview skill building. They can learn about management and consulting, as well as law and finance. And then last week, what's, I don't know if this is most remarkable about the Principal's Advisory Council at Challenge Team, but it was a recess day that students showed up for. So they came on Thursday when they could have slept in. Instead, they came to a 7:30 a.m. meeting at Mountain View and couldn't have been more forthcoming and open with our audience. So I'm so appreciative of their work. September 9th and 10th, our teachers participated in professional development, and many of our teachers are participating in constructing meaning. The other teachers who are not were doing peer observations, and they provided some feedback about that experience where they watched each other deliver best instructional practices. And the teachers shared with us in a feedback survey that they gained strategies, insights, and new perspectives by seeing their other colleagues in action, that they were able to empathize with students because they saw their students in other classes with teachers, and also saw them in other languages and formats. They noted that they had some immediate impact from observing each other and applied those strategies immediately the same day or the next day in their classes, and they just appreciated seeing each other's work in action. So we're really excited to continue that work. Lastly, just in terms of community and family engagement, we've held our first Principal and Friends Coffee, as well as first site council meeting with new parents, teachers, and students. And at every event, we have such highly engaged participants, and at those meetings, we discuss and answer questions about topics such as, you know, how do we measure student success? What's the best way to use the College and Career Center? And how do we make the best time or best use of our ACT time? So, so much to talk about, so much going on in just one quarter. Thank you.
And from Mountain View, Dr. Glazer.
Good evening. We had a over, I mean, close to 100 educators visiting from all up and down the state through Cal MSCS Grant. We had two groups of educators who are interested in seeing a successful computer science pathway, and they went to LASD to visit their pre-k, sixth grade, computer science program, and then they came to our school to see the impact of And then they came to our school to see the impact of continuum of computer science pathway development. And our robotic students did a great job of demonstrating their robots. And they were super impressed. And in the afternoon on the same day, two of our students participated in a panel along with Ms. Winawer to talk about the impact of intentional and collaborative computer science pathway. So there will be some additional publicity coming out from the state with that visit. And speaking of professional learning, I want to give a huge shout out to our new program specialist, Krishna Williams and Jennifer Smith, who worked with the site leadership to create opportunities for our special education instructional assistants. They did a workshop for our staff members to be trained on toileting and feeding, which can be almost life-threatening for some of our students if you're not well-prepared. And we had the OT and the Behavior Specialist engaging our instructional assistants to ensure that our students are well-supported. So I want to give a thanks to the staff members and they'll continue to provide that support. And Homecoming feels like so long ago. And at the Homecoming Dance, we counted, we had 1,255 students attending, I think, which was the highest number of students on campus all at the same time that is not related to some school activity. And I want to say that they did such a great job and I want to give Clara and the rest of the ASB for hosting such a fun event with ice cream and photo booth and a little bit of dancing. And, and I think that it is so good to see students having a great time on our campus.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
I have a question. Sorry, this actually might be for Lucy or Dr. Renee because I know that at the PTSA meeting, they raised the price of the Homecoming Dance, so students wouldn't come at the last minute. So I wondered if that solved that problem or not.
It seemed to solve the problem. So they had increasing prices. It was $20 without an ASB card for the Homecoming Dance. And then it became $50 on the day of the dance, but we had sold in advance 1,200 tickets. And I think we sold about 20 at the door. So seemed to do something.
That seems like a big improvement from what I heard. Thank you.
Any other questions? And we're at 7.4. Do we have any district organizations who would like to address the board? Takes us to 7.5, public comment on items that are not on the agenda. I think we have some.
Not on the regular session agenda. So yes, we do have some.
Tammy Kittle.
Hopefully I won't bore you guys because I should have come at five o'clock. However, I am Tammy Kittle and I teach Health, Avid, PE, and Folklorico at MVHS. And I'm here to speak in favor of Ethnic Studies to be a semester course paired with Health. So option C1, as you guys decided earlier this afternoon. And many actually spoke highly for World Studies. And that would be great as a sophomore class if Ethnic Studies could be paired with Health during the freshman year. And over the past two years, our district has chosen unfortunately to eliminate all one semester classes that could be paired with Health with the decision-making Ethnic Studies a-year class. And each year since, Ethnic Studies, the requirement changed. More and more students are taking Health online, which actually is out of state ed code and out of compliance in 13 areas. It has been reported being low-quality, outdated. It's very inaccurate. It's not inclusive. And students actually report it being painful, taking it for two weeks, eight hours a day. Students also report feeling forced to take Health online as there's no spot for Health in their current possible schedules. We have been able to lessen this impact of this loss by pushing PE teachers out to other departments who had less tenure. I was placed back into PE because of the Ethnic Studies going into a year. And other PE teachers were actually pushed into Social Studies, while others chose to move into ambassadors or Health Careers. We do not expect there to be new sections of other courses for PE teachers to teach. FTE of four years of Social Studies is only FTE-neutral for Social Studies teachers. As soon as students were required to do four years of Social Studies, Health lost 0.4 FTE. If more Health sections were to be dropped due to Ethnic Studies being a year-long course by adding a year-long Social Studies course, it will most likely impact Science. Since Heather Boyle's first credential is in Biology, if we lose all Health sections, she will be asking a Biology teacher to lose a 1-point FTE. We also have a PE teacher credentialed in Math, so that PE teacher would probably have to move a Math teacher out. At Los Altos, the Health teacher's first credential is Performing Arts, so that Health teacher will have to take a Performing Arts spot. Decreasing Health sections is not FTE-neutral and potentially impacts a number of other departments. So I'm asking the board to look really at the full situation. C1 would actually be a great option because Ethnic Studies is very imperative to our students, as you heard. But please pair it with Health and not another Social Studies elective. Thank you.
Next, we have Heather Boyle.
Hello, I'm Heather Boyle and I teach Health Education at MVHS. Research shows a strong connection between healthy behaviors and academic achievement, including higher grades, standardized test scores, graduation rates, and better attendance. Health is required for graduation. There are many state laws requiring specific content and skills to be taught for the instruction and for the instruction to be medically accurate and inclusive. Curriculum needs to be updated constantly to maintain that. Some topics have been required for decades, but more comprehensive sex education was added in 2016, hands-only CPR in 2018, comprehensive mental health ed, including suicide prevention in 2024, and fentanyl-specific drug education in 2025. The online course is not compliant with any of the four laws I just listed above. It has been reviewed by a California Department of Education and California Department of Public Health Working Group and reviewed very poorly. The course is not updated. Our district has received complaints on it not being inclusive. The course quotes Heritage Foundation studies to argue that condoms are ineffective and lists a hysterectomy as a method of contraception, which is not only medically inaccurate, but is offensive considering the history of forced hysterectomies to control reproduction in some communities. No other course is allowed to be taken elsewhere automatically without a waiver or prior authorization and in summer school for advancement. In other districts, this online course is used as credit recovery because it does not fulfill state requirements. There is case law of districts being sued and losing for not providing medically accurate and inclusive sex education. The state is currently conducting an audit of implementation of the California Healthy Youth Act, in part to hold, quote, "non-compliant districts accountable for not providing students the education that they need and deserve." This is the perfect time to ensure that all of our students are receiving quality health ed. If we paired one semester of Social Studies with in-seat Health, we could have a heterogeneous ninth-grade program with all students receiving quality health ed and have academic skills that are taught in both classes. I am a nationally board-certified teacher who has taught honors and AP classes here, and Tammy Kittle has taught Avid for years, so I know that we are capable of doing that. We could facilitate training current MVLA Social Studies teachers to teach Health, to have a truly FTE-neutral transition. Social Studies teachers will already have some of the expertise needed. In some districts, Health Ed is actually part of the Social Studies department. We can easily have a district-wide aligned curriculum in place for Fall 2026. I am asking the board to take a comprehensive look at the ninth-grade program to include in-seat Health for ninth graders as you were reviewing the Social Studies requirements, so our students receive the critical benefits that we can offer them. Thank you.
Next, we have Pawin Deshpande. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Pawin Deshpande. I'm a parent of two children in the district. And I'm here to ask that Ethnic Studies be offered as an elective and not a mandatory course. As a Hindu-American, I value our diverse community and one that represents many cultures and histories. However, the current Ethnic Studies curriculum does not adequately include the stories or history of many students, including my own children. Hindu identity and history are largely ignored. Hinduism is a diverse and ancient religion spanning thousands of years across multiple continents. Teaching it requires a deep understanding, and I'm concerned that most teachers don't have the background or knowledge to do so accurately. Every student needs world history to gain a broad factual understanding of how societies and cultures developed across time. Whereas those interested in social activism can choose Ethnic Studies as an elective. I'm also troubled by what's actually happening in these classrooms. In one Ethnic Studies class, students were instructed to classify themselves according to a wheel of privilege, based on their race, gender, skin color, physical build, sexuality, neurodiversity, and other traits they cannot control. We are teaching our children to judge each other by appearances, playing identity politics in the classroom and dividing students into oppressors and the oppressed. The world we live in is far more complex than this framework allows. I'd like to read a quote from the Holocaust survivor and renowned psychiatrist Viktor Frankl. "There are two races of men in this world, but only these two, the race of the decent man and the race of the indecent man. Both are found everywhere. They penetrate into all groups of society. No group consists entirely of decent or indecent people." That's not what Ethnic Studies is teaching our children. It's teaching the opposite, that some groups are based on wealth, skin color, gender, et cetera, are decent and others are not. I respectfully ask that you restore world history as a required course and make Ethnic Studies as an elective. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Trish Gilbert.
Hi, my name is Trish Gilbert. I'm a parent of a junior and a freshman here at Mountain View. I'd like to speak in favor of the state-required Health class as part of the regular school year curriculum for all students with a designated home for the class in ninth grade. I think there's tremendous benefits to our students for this crucial information on healthy habits and behavior, stress, substance abuse, sleep, sex education, et cetera, being taught during the student's ninth grade year. My junior took Health his freshman year, and I believe he benefited greatly from having this class his first year of high school. Many of our students, just to try to fit it in, end up taking Health their junior year or even their senior year. And I think they could benefit if they took it earlier. My freshman will take Health next semester, but right now he actually has a free period as there was not a one semester class that he could pair with his Health class. He tried for Positive Psych, but it wasn't offered. I'm a huge proponent of Ethnic Studies. My junior benefited from the class, but just given that, you know, we have, there's only so many periods in the day, in the year, all of the things that are required. I do think that of the options, having a one semester Ethnic Studies class and a one semester Health class that was part of the ninth grade curriculum would benefit all of our students. And I think there is that benefit in that happening freshman year. Thank you.
And we'll have more when we get down to administrative items.
Okay. Alrighty, so that leads us to 8.1, our Students of the Month. And let's have Claire go first.
First, I would like to invite up Kai Chang, who is our October Student of the Month.
Fan club.
Mountain View High School is proud to recognize Kai Chang as the October Student of the Month, honoring his outstanding leadership, commitment to service, and meaningful connections within the MVHS and Mountain View communities. As a senior at MVHS, Kai has made an incredible impact through his four years of dedicated involvement in ASB, where he currently serves as the club's commissioner. In this role, he oversees nearly 100 student clubs, helping to foster connection and engagement across campus. For Kai, leadership means leading by example, whether arriving early to set up for events, staying late to clean up afterwards, or stepping in to support others whenever needed. As both club's commissioner and a member of ASB's executive cabinet, he plays a key role in guiding meetings, coordinating with administration, and ensuring that every student-organized club has the resources to thrive. Kai's leadership extends beyond the Mountain View campus. As a member of the Mountain View Youth Advisory Committee, he works with fellow youth leaders to organize community events for younger kids. His insight and initiative helps strengthen the bond between local youth and the broader Mountain View community. Reflecting on his time at Mountain View, Kai cherishes the many relationships he has built with students and staff alike. This year, his role as club's commissioner has allowed him to connect with even more people, broadening his appreciation for the diverse passions that make up the MVHS community. Above all, he is grateful for his close friends, whose support and enthusiasm have made his high school experience both fulfilling and unforgettable. While still finalizing his college plans, Kai hopes to pursue a major in the social sciences at a four-year university. His leadership, civic engagement, and ability to build community wherever he goes makes him a deserving recipient of the Mountain View's October 2025 Student of the Month Award. Thank you.
Congratulations, Kai. Is there anything you'd like to share with the board tonight?
No, I don't have any particular things shared to share, but thank you.
Great.
Do you have any questions for me?
We're just proud of everything you've accomplished, Kai, and would love to honor you tonight. If we have your, I think you have parents in the audience to join us up for a quick picture. Right. You ready, Lucy? Our next one?
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor today to recognize one of our most outstanding students as Student of the Month, someone whose impact on our campus reaches far beyond the classroom and who's worth ethic, creativity, and leadership inspire everyone around her, Avni Rajagopal. This month's honoree is a truly exceptional scholar and leader who has not only excelled in some of the most rigorous academic areas, including AI and machine learning research in our advanced scientific investigation class, competitive computer science, and varsity-level speech and debate, but also has made a lasting mark on our school's arts and student life. As a founder and president of Blue Broadway, a completely student-run theater club, Avni has built something extraordinary from the ground up. Over the past year, she has performed two successful full-scale musicals and taught theater workshops at a local elementary school while leading a 40-plus-person team and coordinating everything from licensing to publicity. Her passion for the performing arts has opened new creative opportunities for students across campus. Her interest in technology and education is equally inspiring. Through the Gen AI Club, which she has also founded, she's worked to make generative AI more accessible to her peers, organizing guest speaker events, leading coding workshops, and creating an inclusive learning environment for students who might not otherwise have access to these cutting-edge topics. Outside of schools, she serves as a reporter and community editor for the Mid Peninsula Post and is a nationally recognized choir singer. But beyond the awards and achievements, what really makes a student truly remarkable is her commitment to the community, her drive to lead with purpose, and her ability to bridge the arts, sciences, and service in everything she does. Please join me in congratulating Avni Rajagopal for her outstanding contributions to our school community.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. I really appreciate it. It's an honor to be recognized. Yeah, I didn't really prepare anything, but I really appreciate being recognized and. And it's an honor to be here. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
We just want to name how proud we are of you, Avni, and I think you look familiar, Mid Peninsula Post, as soon as I heard that. Your name sounds familiar. Do you have friends, family in the audience tonight that can join us for a quick picture? All right, congratulations again to our Students of the Month. Thank you for joining us. That leads us on to our consolidated agenda. If there's anything that needs to get pulled or we have questions about, and if not, I'll take a motion. Yeah.
Just a second, let me find my notes. The question was about nine point four, so pro-care therapy that provides speech therapy, I believe. Is this something that we need every year? Why are we using contractors for this instead of using school psychiatrists?
Jennifer, can you correct me if I'm wrong? This is a service for a student with additional needs, and we don't know what those needs are on a yearly basis. So it's a contract for an individual student, I believe.
So it's not a consistent service that we acquire. Okay, gotcha.
And so I move that we approve the consolidated agenda, I mean, nine point one to nine point eight.
Second. Moved by Catherine, seconded by Theda. All those in favor? Oh, and I'm sorry, student board members. How do you vote?
I approve. I approve.
Okay, let me try this again. I am rusty, yes. Five oh. Thank you. All righty, and that leads us to eleven, our business items. We have one, eleven point one, and I believe we have some public comments.
We have three public comments before we consider that one.
So we'll start with Caroline Horn.
Thanks very much for giving me this opportunity to speak. I have a parent of two alums from Los Altos High School. I'm also a resident of Los Ninos Way, which is on the rear part of the high school near Karim. Would like to tell you that I very much oppose the idea of turning those tennis, four tennis courts, or even wherever they've been, back into parking lots. I would really like to see the district encourage our students to use public transportation or use active transportation. Those kinds of things don't require a whole new parking lot. And I know that there are organizations like the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition or the Bike Exchange that can help provide bicycles to students who don't have them. And also VTA can provide smart passives. It's a very wonderful program. A lot of people use that. Places like Foothill College use it so that students can have free bus passives. And also, when students can either bike or they can ride the bus, they have operational independence. They're not dependent on fossil fuels. I think we all want to meet our climate goals for the year and for our children. So I really encourage you to please reconsider this idea of putting a parking lot in an area that's already a very high conflict zone between walkers and riders. Please, I want you to, please, please, don't pave the tennis courts.
Next, we have Alex Hoffman.
Good evening. I am a recent Los Altos High School graduate from six months ago, and I was on the tennis team for two years. I'm here to speak in strong opposition of turning some of the tennis courts into parking lot. And I'd like to begin by emphasizing how much the tennis courts help in fostering community at Los Altos High School. As someone on the tennis team, I've made incredible long-lasting connections, both in the tennis team and with friends outside the tennis team, because the tennis courts are an easy place to meet and to create relationships. I'm still in contact with many of the people who I played tennis with on the team, despite that we are in different states for college, different times, with different schedules, and whenever I get back. But now, I always try to find a court. However, with the courts already being partially closed off for a time now, it's become increasingly more difficult to be able to get access to a court. And this just encourages people to stay home and not become as active a member of the community, which is an important aspect of Los Altos High School. Additionally, I have also bike to school all four years, and I already know how messy that area can be. Adding a parking lot there would cause a lot of chaos, both short-term, because everybody parks on the East Drive way over there, but also in the long-term, because there's more cars turning into parking lot exactly where the bikers also need to go. And then there's bike lanes on either side, so it just creates more chaos overall. And of course, with our carbon footprint as a school. Thank you.
Next, we have Terry Barton.
Thank you. I'm speaking as an individual, but I wear three hats. I'm currently the chairperson of the Mountain View pedestrian bicycle advisory committee. So over the past five years, I've gained some expertise on top of my engineering background in my transportation. I'm a parent of three graduates and three college graduates who never had access to a car to drive themselves to school. And finally, I am a teacher retired last June from Menlo African High School, teaching math and computer science. So I'm speaking after seeing the study session and noticing that only one option was brought forward in four flavors: parking, 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 and parking. This is a path to an unskilled decision, where the framing of the problem, the inputs considered, and the process for deliberation preclude a well-considered decision. This is not a parking problem. It's a problem of too many staff and students choosing to drive in single occupancy vehicles. It's a problem of student parking sticker allocation process. It's the problem of the city not managing the parking resources on public streets to minimize impact. It's a problem of not publicizing the transportation benefit the district offers its staff. It's a problem of health education that students don't know the consequences of driving everywhere. It's a classroom problem of reduced attention and poor mental health for students not being active by walking or biking before sitting in class. Taking the 36,000 square feet from the tennis courts and making it parking is land valued at $9 million and removing it as an educational resource for tennis or any other academic or extracurricular activity. The voters who supported the bond measure weren't told that close to $1.5 million would be spent on parking. By not working with students to reduce the impact of driving, we are teaching them that the climate change crisis is not a problem that will substantially impact their lives. There are resources from the cities of Mountain View and Los Altos can be marshaled. Bike lanes have recently added Del Camino and California Street. Improvements have been made to Rink Stork, and safety improvements are planned for El Monte. The public streets are for public use. I am asking that one of you make a motion to ask staff to engage with the community and the cities and experience transportation consultants to come back with a real list of options more in line with the values of the district and the needs of the broader community the district serves. I'd also point out that your proposal includes an outdated way of measuring traffic. LOS, or Level of Service, is no longer accepted by most entities in California. Vehicle miles traveled is the proper way to evaluate transportation problem. So I hope you will consider a motion to delay a decision until you have more reasonable choice of inputs and realize this is not just a parking problem that will go away. Thank you.
Do we have any others?
That's it.
So then, is there any?
Introduction?
Yeah, context or introduction to eleven point one?
The board knows that a year ago, parking became limited for Los Altos students on the adjacent streets, especially on the north side of the school site, when signs went up last January that said, "No, two-hour parking from the hours of eight to noon." Upon hearing some of the concerns from our community, the board asked us to look into other means of other parking situations. We were able to create a temporary parking lot and 47 spaces. We're still roughly 75 spaces short of what we have at Mountain View. The board directed us to look at options for parking. That is currently where we're at. We're looking at options. In order to look at these options, our architect is asking us to approve a contract for traffic study in that area that would look at the best place for a parking lot if you were to so choose, or whether parking is not appropriate based upon the traffic study. And so approval would be $15,000 for a traffic study for that back area of campus.
Anyone have any comments or questions before we consider this? We'll start with Theda this time. Theda, Alex, and then Badim.
Yeah, so basically now comes a time when we have to spend money. And we have heard, I think, more data from the community. And I'm in favor of MBLA working with the city of Los Altos on traffic and parking. First, the city likely has traffic data from their recent changes and parking restrictions around Los Altos High School that could inform our planning. Second, adding a parking lot affects traffic throughout the area around the high school, not just the two intersections included in the proposed study, Destal Drive and Jordan Drive and Castillo Way and Jordan Drive. So a more comprehensive approach is needed. And third, MBLA is the largest employer in Los Altos. And I think we need to establish a formal working relationship with the city on traffic and parking issues, which would benefit both the school and the broader community. This is an opportunity to create a collaborative approach that will serve us best going forward. So that's my recommendation.
So I also believe that since our last discussion, we've gotten a lot of new data that wasn't available before. A lot of it came from the community, many letters that the board received, folks who spoke here. But also another very interesting piece of data that we've received from Tracy. Thank you. And I wanted to first validate that I'm interpreting the data correctly. But my understanding from the data that was shared is that we have a lottery on who gets parking permits among the students. And out of the students who were outside of the boundary of two miles around the high school,
One mile.
One mile, sorry, one mile, only eight of these did not actually receive the permit.
Sounds about right.
Meaning, say again, or maybe 20, sorry. Yeah, I think it was, sorry, 17, not eight, 17. Yeah, isn't it 166 out of 183, which is, which is then a 17? Maybe we should just ask Eric instead of.
Do you have your numbers handy, Tracy? I can pull them up.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I think she's right.
Those who live outside of one mile.
Outside boundary.
Seventeen, right?
Yeah, it's more, yes.
Seventeen. Okay, so if you assume that anyone who lives outside of one mile and is justified to not be able to reasonably quickly get to school by biking or walking, right? If all of those students applied and only 17 of them didn't get a permit, then that tells us that the most acute need of parking is only 17 spots, not 50, not 70, only 17. Now, we also mentioned in the same data points that there is 20 exceptions permits that we delivered, which is reasonable because there are different types of situations, even if you live close by, things could happen, right? And out of those, I think all of those got, out of those also, we actually were able to satisfy, right? So it makes me believe somehow from this data that what we're missing is maybe 20 parking spots, maybe 20 to 30. Is that the sense that Stacy, you and Eric, Tracy, you and Eric have? Or what is, what is the right interpretation of this data, I guess? If that's not.
I would say it's hard to give an exact number because we don't know how many students didn't apply, who might have applied if they thought, and how many students are going to be turning, you know, getting a driver's license at the semester. I mean, in terms of hard numbers, but I would say right now, I believe we have adequate parking.
I presume that anyone who really needed it would have at least applied, right? The other piece I'll mention is that if we are indeed seeing such a big parking problem, which we are, right? Like the lottery should prioritize those that live outside the boundary. And right now, it's not like it doesn't. And so my, the TLDR, what I'm trying to say, it sounds like the number of actual parking spots that we need is between 20 and 30. So maybe the plans of converting multiple tennis courts are too grand for our actual needs. We need to change the prioritization logic. And I actually very much agree with Theda that we still need to work with Los Altos City Council. It's a long-term thing. Today it's parking, tomorrow it's something else. We have to figure out how to work together and see if there is additional solutions that are appropriate for the 20 to 30 spots that we need and serve us longer term. So that's my kind of new thinking, given the data that I've seen. Badim is next or Kat right now?
Yeah.
I'll go last.
So first of all, thank you to everybody who express their desire for tennis courts, as well as people who express to us the rationale for having more parking and the challenges that they face with students parking in the area. There, I think we have a little bit of lack of data. Because the way I started to look at this is there is necessity, there is a need, and then there's sort of privilege. And what I think we need to do with parking, if we need to build it, but there is no good solution, right? Like, there is no good option. But if you need to add more parking, I want to make sure that parking satisfies the need and not the privilege. So looking at this data, I wanted to understand how much need we have in students and how we define that need, and I don't think we have that information. And a reasonable thing would be to say, as either a school or a district, that the need is you live outside one-mile radius. That's your need. Right, wrong, it's a definition. You have a job that you need to go to, and we have X number of exceptions for that, right? Even if you live within an area or outside an area. You have to drive a sibling and thus, you know, two people or more, I think, whatever that prioritization rubric is, I would love to see it first. Because if we approve this proposal, we are basically committing to parking, which is, we don't know which option. We can always bail out, but we are committing, we're basically saying, yes, parking is in, and we are just evaluating what it would look like. And I don't think we are, we need to take that step until we understand how much need is there? Can we satisfy the need with how many additional spots, if any? And everything else is more of a privilege. So I stopped comparing Los Altos to Mountain View because we don't have enough parking at either sites. And the problem is more acute at Los Altos for sure, just like percentage-wise. But I'm not sure that we actually have that need based on the data. So I would love to understand it.
Just a correction, if you approve this, we are not committed to continuing with the parking lot. It's not a final deal. That won't be.
Yeah.
That's way down the road.
The way I think about it is that we are basically saying we are going with the parking. We just, we are asking somebody to evaluate. It's like, you're remodeling a house, you're paying $50,000 for an architect to give you a plan. Yes, you can always bail out, right? Because of that plan, you realize that you need to spend, you know, a million dollars to remodel the house. You can always bail out, you just spend $50,000. But in reality, you are actually committing with your. You can always bail out, you just spend fifty thousand dollars. But in reality, you are actually committing with your desire to remodel. And 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 that's why you're hiring an architect. So I'm not ready to commit to parking until I actually understand what is the need and how we define that need and what is the need at Los Altos.
I wanna plus one, uh the need for more data, I sort of made a bunch of assumptions and sharing that if the assumptions that we currently could make about the data are true, then maybe the need is twenty to thirty spaces. But really deeply understanding it, understanding the scale of the actual need, then can help us understand, do we go with the options um where we need the study to be conducted, which is more around like fifty to seventy parking spots? Or are we at a different scale and then different solutions that are appropriate? So yeah, so I think it'd be great to to better understand and, you know, we can make some sort of estimations in my mind as well. Yeah.
I just wanted to say one interesting comment of when Eric and I, I think you were there too, Esme, when we met with the city.
Yes.
About parking.
Mm-hmm.
They, and um at the time, their idea, their idea was, well, you can't park in our streets anymore, so what are you gonna do it? And I'm going, but you need parking. Well, if you didn't take away your parking, then we wouldn't need the parking. So I mean, it's kind of a catch twenty-two, but then they said, well, maybe you could have buses from the public parking in the city. I'm thinking, well, I think it would be better if you put tennis courts where that parking is in them and then let us park at our school, you know, I mean, so we we do need to work a little bit differently with the city if we're going to work out some of these kind of details. Because, you know, it can't be all our our doing. We put the tennis courts in or the parking. They don't put any more parking in. They don't have the parking, but they also don't have more tennis courts. So I mean, we need to work better together, but the the other fact of the matter is we have a very um defined footprint. We have how many acres? Thirty acres for twenty-two hundred-some students. And it's way small compared to the number of students that, you know, the acreage recommended for a school of this size. But it was designed and built surrounded by an entire neighborhood when there was only half that many students. So we are um constrained. At some point, we'll have to make some compromise positions, but if we don't need this many, maybe we could still have ten tennis courts and have enough parking for a few more or or whatever. We could, we could do some more looking into it.
I'll add, I think, uh Katrin, one thing that stood out to me from what you shared is when we originally had the conversation with the city, we were all sort of early on in this big problem with a lot of the pub public sort of like making a lot of um comments and complaints and, you know, for good reasons. Um and now we have a lot of people who are coming in and actually are commenting on the community need, not just the school need. It's just as many who are commenting on the fact that the community of the city of Los Altos needs the courts. I think it makes it much more of a city issue and a new topic and angle to discuss with the city, which we didn't have at that time. And so maybe that could be helpful and how do we reach middle ground to help the city of Los Altos to have tennis courts and make sure that Los Altos high school students are doing well as well.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with you. However, the city understood the choices that we would have to make with their decisions as well in terms of where we can address uh the lack of parking.
Well, I think uh what has changed, and I I appreciate everyone, I echo Vadim's um and Alex's need for more data, and also thank you to all the community who came out and gave us more information. Because I think at least we hadn't heard that. I don't know if city council had heard that as well. So I think hearing from the public is how we learn. And I think city council now would hear if we had a uh hopefully, I think it would be a joint meeting where they could hear from the public and and the public could come come and comment. And um, you know, it is a trade-off. Uh but I think we need more information and we need um actual data from the city um on traffic, which they have already, um and and parking uh prioritization. So I think uh we tried once and I think trying again, I think is needed.
And I would like to also have data on tennis courts in Los Altos too, but besides just ours.
Mm-hmm.
I know in Mountain View, there's a lot of other tennis courts too, but I don't know in Los Altos. If you have or many other tennis courts.
So I don't think we we talked about
So I mean, because if you're comparing traffic to tennis, you know, it's like, then
It did not
um you want to have the community serve, then it would be nice to have enough courts that weren't too, that not everybody was so impacted. So.
What's the feasibility of um and not just feasibility, but timeline of being able to get a bit more data?
Well, that's what this traffic study would do, is get more data in terms of how many cars are actually in that area, coming and going, what it would look like, whether it's even a safe option to think about adding parking back there and so on. So that's what this study will actually do. Uh we could ask the city of Los Altos to go halvesies on something like this. Um I have a feeling I know what their answer will be. But, you know, if we decide to put this off down the road, then we can always do that as well.
So actually, um my ask was not that we go halvesies on this or they pay for it, but they already have done, presumably have done, they've done improvements around the school to the streets. So what I'm asking is if they can share that data with us. Because they already have made changes and presumably they did traffic studies to make those changes. They didn't just, I assume, I mean, maybe that's not correct, but usually how a city works is they do a traffic study and then they make changes based on that traffic study.
I have not, they haven't shared a traffic study with us yet. They are planning on putting delineators on Alman to protect the bike lane on Alman in front of the school. They do plan to do that. That is some months away. Uh they are waiting to do anything on uh Jarden. Um because they were waiting for us to put in our parking lot.
Okay, well, haven't they made changes to Jarden already?
They've made, uh my understanding is they've made two changes to Jarden over the years. Once that was not well-received and once that referred it back to the old way.
Okay, but I, that was fairly recent, right?
But I don't know, they haven't shared any traffic stuff.
I'm just asking, what I'm asking for is for us to ask them to say, will you share it with us? And then we'll have more data.
We could
Which we can do for free, right? We don't have to spend. I mean, maybe it won't be illustrative, but I think at least asking.
Uh well, do I, I feel like we are kind of having a consensus that we just want to let it ride for a while. Is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, I think I'm hearing that we're not.
You mean right there, so to your, yeah. Getting data, no?
We're getting data and we're
We're trying to gather more data, but for now, we're gonna let it ride and not do an agreement or not until we have
That sounds right, yes.
Uh I thought we also had uh consensus on on trying again with the city.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Data in the city and no contract yet, right?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
That was mine. Okay.
Okay. So there your choice right now is whether you want to vote on this and you can vote negatively or whether or not there is no motion and it dies for lack of emotion.
I I say let it ride and I'm not gonna, I'm personally not gonna make a motion.
I'm not gonna make a motion because, I mean, it depends on what date we get, right?
This is not the time for a motion, yeah.
All right.
Okay, so then that takes us to our board operations. Um twelve point one, any board suggestions for future board?
So I guess the board suggestion would be to have a um a meeting with uh Los Altos City Council. Um and then my other suggestion would be to, since health has been brought up and we're discussing um, you know, different options, I think finding out um more about health in particular. You know, these allegations that the online class isn't compliant, I think need to be addressed. They've been made public. So we need to like have have staff tell us if that's correct or not.
Um Darren, Theda, you stole mine. Because that's what I, I was gonna say that before I even came to the meeting tonight, is that I I worried about health. Um well, I've always worried about health because I've never thought, as a former CPR first aid, EMS and stuff teacher for over thirty years, I've always thought that what may or may not be as robust as I wish. And um it the online version, and so I, that's important to me. Plus, if we're not in compliance, that is absolutely necessary. Uh the, um that we um not allow certain vendors to offer the online class if they don't meet the proper criteria. We either need to find a different one or we need to make, and not make, have people take the class in seat here.
Agreed, and there is no stealing, there's only agreement.
Yeah, okay, and agree, agree.
No other topics?
We should have a report on health for the next meeting.
Okay.
Because obviously that plays into your decision-making process.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
Could play into your decision-making processes.
Okay, um we'll move on to twelve point two. Any communications or correspondence?
No.
Twelve point three, any legislative update?
I think the biggest uh news that is coming out of Sacramento is the governor is starting to sign some bills. There's a child safety bill that's coming out that is going to have a clearinghouse for all, everyone with teachers and anyone that's been under investigation. That is one piece of legislation that's coming out. Additionally, uh the governor signed A B seven fifteen, which creates uh an office of civil rights in the, in um for the state of California. We know that the federal Ed um Department of Justice Edu uh Office of Civil Rights has been uh dismantled in San Francisco, so this would have a state version along with an anti-Semitism coordinator and and uh a religious discrimination coordinator or director, I forget the title. Uh and ethnicity discrimination director, religion, ethnicity, and one other coordinator.
Wasn't it L G B T?
L G B T, yeah. So um that'll be uh implemented starting in twenty twenty-six.
All right, and that takes us to twelve point four. Our next meeting will be Monday, October twenty-seventh. Here, seven o'clock.
Okay.
And we'll now uh uh move into closed session since we didn't do it earlier. And are we gonna stay in here?
Yeah, we'll stay here for
We'll stay here.